Still in process-ish, but yeah.
All right, welcome everyone. I call the September 1st, 2020 regular city council meeting to order. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings was extended until September 30th. Therefore, this meeting will be held remotely, entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign up agenda sheets were provided by the city clerk's office via link from the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. For our phoning callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. Those who provided advanced notice are able to make comments under the visitor comment portion of the meeting. At this moment, at this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough? I will unmute you just a moment. Find you. Find her. Councilmember McCullough? Councilmember McCullough, please leave your mic. Are you here?
Here.
Please say here. Thank you. Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Mayor Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Dorr?
Here.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
I'm present.
Great. Welcome everyone. In addition, the following city staff are in attendance. City manager Jennifer Phillips, city clerk Laura Hathaway, and city attorney Paul Byrne. So our other staff members will be joining the meeting as we get to their items on the agenda. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some of the guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For our council members, at the appropriate times, I'll be calling on each member. Ask, asking if they wish to speak or ask a question. And if you want to speak, please indicate by holding up the yellow card, speaker card in the lower portion of your screen and I'll call you. As to reduce two people speaking at the same time. All right. First item on the agenda tonight is the meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none. We have our public engagement opportunities. And here's our slide. All right, so our upcoming public engagement opportunities here in the city is Puget Sound Starts Here Month. Take, take the pledge to protect local waterways at www.bothel.wa.gov. P S A, P S S H. All right, and then give input on storm and surface water master plan. Visit the virtual open house from September 4th through the 30th at www.bothel.wa.gov. All right, thank you. All right, on to a proclamation for what we were just had for our public engagement. So September is Puget Sound Starts Here Month. To that end, I'll now read the formal proclamation into the record. So Puget Sound Starts Here Month. Whereas Puget Sound and the waterways that connect our mountains to the shore contribute in numerous ways to Bothell's economic infrastructure, quality of life, and our natural resources. Whereas the city council's environmental goal is to protect the natural environment through integrated natural resource management. And whereas water quality is a priority for the health and welfare of Bothell citizens. And whereas millions of pounds of toxic pollutants enter Puget Sound every year, most of which result from rain washing over hard surfaces contaminated with yard chemicals, pet waste, oil soaps, oils, soaps, and other toxins that then enter storm drains, streams, and ultimately the Puget Sound. And whereas state agencies and more than 750 local organizations, governments, and tribes, including Bothell, have joined together to engage residents in protecting and improving local and regional water quality. Puget Sound, whereas Puget Sound Starts Here Month is an opportunity to provide educational opportunities for the public to learn how they can help clean up Puget Sound and our local waterways. Now therefore, I, Liam Olson, mayor of Bothell, do hereby proclaim the month September 2020 as Puget Sound Starts Here Month in the city of Bothell, Washington, and call upon all citizens to protect natural resources by reducing and eliminating sources of pollution. So I think this is an important proclamation as we live on Snohomish River here. It runs through the old Wayne Golf Course. And we know from that how much good that waterway does for the salmon recovery and just all the natural environment and animals that rely on it for just their livelihood and their sustenance. So it, it's how, it's the reason Bothell came here, was founded here such a long time ago. So I think this is great to bring forward and make note of. All right, on to our special presentation from Snohomish County Health District update. We have Regina Gray, the Environmental Health Director for Snohomish County Health District, giving us an update today.
Great, thank you. I am going to try to share my screen. And hopefully that will... There, can you see my slides? Perfect. Okay, hello everybody. My name is Regina Gray. As was said, I am the Environmental Health Director at the Snohomish Health District. I'm very happy to be here with you today. I am hoping to give you all a quick update on what the Health District has been doing in 2020 and what our plans are for 2021. First and foremost, of course, is the COVID-19 response. Obviously, this is an ever-changing situation. Guidance and news on this changes so often, so we really encourage everybody to check out our website, follow us on social media to stay up to date on all of the latest. This graph shows the daily case counts in Snohomish County. As you can see, we are in a second wave of the disease, thankfully not as severe as the first wave. This graph shows the rolling two-week case rate. This is a metric that we need to report to the state. The target is less than 25 cases per 100,000 residents in a rolling two-week period. So as you can see, we're well above that. However, I am happy to report that this graph is a little bit behind. And over the past two weeks, our case rates have continued to decline. We're currently at approximately 60 cases per 100,000 residents. Every week, we produce a weekly report that we post on the website on the case count page. It's very comprehensive, but we also produce a really nice snapshot that gives a much more concise and easy-to-read picture of where we sit relative to the metrics. The snapshot comes out on Mondays and we encourage everybody to take a look at that. Some of the key priorities that we've been focusing on lately specifically related to the COVID response are really testing capacity and case investigations. We were lucky to get access to some KIRIZAC dollars that have helped us hire on 50 new case investigators. And we've been able to really stay on top of the contact tracing that way. We've also recently nearly doubled our testing capacity and we've reduced a lot of the restrictions that we have on eligibility for testing. We are opening up a second testing site each Tuesday in Linwood at the food bank as well to help serve some underserved communities in South County. And we've been focusing also on some long-term care facilities since we're starting to see an uptick in outbreaks associated with those. So of course, even though COVID is a massive undertaking, life in other areas does go on and our other work in our communities continues. Right? We're still out and about. We've been doing food safety inspections, responding to complaints, performing inspections related to safe environments, and also onsite septic applications. Bothell in particular, you guys have 259 annual food permits which require about 360 routine inspections each year. In 2019, we approved 22 septic applications and 15 septic as-built with a Bothell address. Bothell has 31 water recreation facilities requiring over 50 inspections a year. And we also ensure quality indoor air environments at 13 schools. So you actually see us head out your way quite a bit. And my food safety staff tell me that Bothell has a nice feel of multiculturalism in their restaurants and some of the best Indian food around. We also provide a lot of outreach resources for local businesses. These are some of the resources that we've provided to cities for distribution to their businesses. We've got posters and the floor stickers that help mark the six feet apart. You should have received a box of these recently from us. Something that we've been grappling with lately is how to do outreach when all of our typical modes, things like fairs, schools, and community groups have been off limits. So we've been exploring ways to engage with the community virtually instead. And moving forward into 2021, obviously, we'll be continuing all of our important work in the community, things like communicable diseases, food safety, and permit applications. And we've also been focusing on the goals that we outlined in our strategic plan. The Board of Health adopted a strategic plan in 2020. You can find a copy on our website if you're interested. But we'll be really focusing next year on some of the goals that we outlined there in order to improve our organization. I'm sure everybody is watching their budgets very closely. Right now, we are doing the same thing. Our 2020 budget was balanced at 16.75 million, which included 113 permanent staff. We're initiating our 2021 budget process right now. Per capita contributions definitely help as they fund things that are typically not covered by other funding sources. This year, contributions from Bothell-funded needle cleanup kits for residents and 26 new Narcan kits for the Bothell Police Department. I was encouraged to point out to you that if there are things that you are particularly interested in, things you'd like us to focus on in your community, we can customize your inter-local agreement to meet your specific community needs. Something else that we'll be working on in 2021 is the establishment of a public health foundation. This foundation will help us gain access to funding sources such as grants that we wouldn't have qualified for ordinarily as a government agency. And there is just a ton of information on our website and on our social media. We have a blog, we have newsletters, and lots of other ways to keep in touch and stay informed about the ever-changing situation of COVID-19, but also all of the other work that we're doing. And really with that, I thank you very much for your time. And if we have any time, I can certainly answer any questions if there are any.
Great, thank you for your presentation. Does anyone have any questions? Councilmember Agnew?
Thank you for the presentation. It was very good. I was wondering if you know the number of cases that Bothell has in the Snohomish County portion of Bothell?
Probably. If you go to our website, we do, in the case count page, we have all of the cases listed by city. That is probably the Snohomish County portion of Bothell because we really only deal with Snohomish County. It's probably not Bothell as a whole, but I can double-check.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And I thank you for hiring my daughter-in-law as a contract tracer for Snohomish County. She loves it. She's studying to be an epidemiologist, so this kind of followed right through. And I'm not sure you were, you were talking about if there was any other resources that we have needs for. And we have what Navigator program that brings mental health to the police department. So the police come out and they can give mental health or set up people that are in dire need of some mental health. And I was wondering if we could, if we could talk about maybe getting some funding for that from you guys?
Well, I don't know. Let's talk about that.
It's great. Can you please un-share so we can see the entirety of council on one screen, please?
Yes, absolutely. There, did that work?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know the answer to that myself because that is not my area of expertise, but I can certainly talk to the powers that be and we can have a conversation about that. Sure.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Dorr?
Thank you, mayor. I actually had a question in reference to slides. So when, first of all, thank you for a great, very brief presentation. I appreciate that. But I was curious about customizing allocations and I wanted to see that slide again that you showed some of the options. If that's possible?
Yes. I think it's possible. Hold on. It's just giving me the spinning circle. I don't...
Well, maybe you could talk about some of the categories because there was one in particular I was interested in, but I didn't write it down and I, I forgot what it was, but I am interested in the whole customization conversation. Oh, I know what it was. I was very interested in safe routes to school and complete streets. So do you give grants for safe routes to schools and complete streets? Or is that, how is, I guess, how is it covered? It says not covered by other funding. So how, how do you support safe routes to schools and complete streets?
Right, so what that is really referring to is when cities enter into an interlocal agreement for per capita funding to the health district, then that is something that we can focus our staff time and efforts on if that is important in your community. So that would be something that when we did an interlocal, we would specifically say, this is what you would like, you would like your funding to be funneled towards.
Great. Well, I, I didn't know that you did that and that's something that we have a levy for, but the levy will be ending soon-ish. So I'd love to get as much as we can out of it by perhaps having, getting some grants or funding through you. And then the other comment I had that I wanted to thank you for is the childcare outreach. I think this is a coming crisis when parents are trying to go back to work and their kids are learning remotely and the lack of childcare. A lot of childcare providers are going out of business. And so, you know, that's mostly an immigrant community that provides the childcare, childcare resources and they're going out of business and they often don't have health insurance. So although we need them very much, they're also at great risk if they open up. So I appreciate anything that you can do to help keep childcare available for working families. So thank you so much.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, mayor. I wanted to ask a question regarding schools. While most of our kids are going to be virtually learning, if and when we start to send our kids back to school, do we have testing sites? Or what would the process be for actually testing kids at school?
It's an excellent question and it's something that we have been discussing as we've been grappling with the prospect of kids actually going back to school for in-person learning. At the moment, we have a test site in downtown Everett on Broadway that is open to anybody. And anybody that needs to get a test can go there and get a test. You sign up online and it's very easy to do. So that's, that's an option for anybody who's worried about their kid and, and children can certainly be tested there as well. So that, that's our, our availability at the moment. It's definitely going to be more of a conversation as we start talking about what that looks like when kids go back to school.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. I had a question. Do you know the, I'd say, the current average for the turnaround on the COVID tests?
It depends on where you get it because it depends on which lab, the, the particular testing site that you've gone to sends their sample to. We use Northwest Labs, which is, we advertise, I think, a two-to-three-day turnaround. We've been getting them in a little bit sooner than that, but we don't like to overpromise, so we tell people two to three days. If you are getting your, I think, maybe Seymour, for example, if you're getting your test through someplace like that, they might use the public health lab, which I think their wait times are a little bit longer. Other labs are a little bit shorter. It kind of depends on which lab you're using.
All right, thank you very much. I'm not seeing any other questions or comments. So thank you again for taking the time to come speak with us and give your presentation today.
Yeah, you're very welcome. I will try to get the answers to some of these questions I wrote down and I'll, I'll get back to you with those.
Great.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
All right, we're on to council committee reports. Does there anyone have a report to share that might have still had a council committee, regional committee over recess? Not likely, so, all right, we'll go by that one. So our next item is visitor comments. City clerk? I believe we had some comments received.
Hello. Yes, we do. We had, we've received three written comments and we have one person, I believe they're on the line to speak verbally. So regarding the written comments, Kevin Kiernan submitted written comments regarding the closure of Main Street. That was forwarded to council. Joanne Harconan submitted written comments regarding the closure of Main Street. And Eric Schaefer submitted written comments regarding the closure of Main Street. Both of those were also forwarded to council. The person we have online is Lee Henderson, who had submitted multiple documents, which were earlier shared with the council. They were too big to present on here. Lee, are you on the line? Ms. Henderson, are you, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Great. Yes, we can. Thank you. So we'll give you three minutes to speak. Our timer is broken, so I'm going to set it on my phone beginning in a minute. Thank you. Go ahead, Lee.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay, council? Okay.
We can, yep.
On behalf of my business, Alexis Cafe, George Marshall, who owns the Bines, Hoben, who owns Tana Sushi, as well as Neville Redman, who owns the Bison, we thank you for the opportunity you have given our businesses to survive. The restaurant industry has been the hardest hit nationally during this time. The mandates are overwhelming and changing often for the state. We do all our best to comply. Because the street has been closed to traffic, we have been able to increase our seating and that means increase our sales tax to the state and the city. We have also been able to bring back many employees as well. As you have seen by the petition signed by over 2,000 community members in six weeks, we have had amazing support for permanently closing down the block of Main Street between 101st and 102nd. Community members have stated over and over that this is what should have happened many years ago, especially with the constructional changes on the street in 2017. 2014 was the start of building all the apartments around downtown. The goal was walkability. So now we have a wider sidewalk with no curbs, beautiful planted garden beds, and fantastic lighting. It became perfect for a town center. I know that at least four of you have had the pleasure of being on Main Street either on bike, walking, or eating since the closure. That is the best way to get a pulse of town center. When we get past this, we see the future is bright. Our town center can be used for farmer's markets, sidewalk sales, chalk art, art walks, paper Halloween, wine walks, and tree lighting. There is so much potential. The benefits far surpass supporting eateries. We want it to be family-friendly, open for all ages, and connect to the campuses. We realize that there is a huge need for ADA parking. I have personally spoken to Paul Desolay to request two of his three parking spots behind Level 7 Salon be designated ADA. I also think that putting two ADA parking spots on 101st by the store, First and Main, would be needed. That seems to be the main concern for the service industries on Main Street and it is long overdue. We are not sure when community members will feel comfortable enough to come inside, so we implore you to make the best decision for all of them. Those of us who have tents up will be adding two walls, heaters, and more lights for the fall and winter. We will do anything to survive. We need your help, though. Please listen to your community and give them a town center. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, that was it. All right, on to our next item, consent agenda. So I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Agnew?
Does that move that we pass the consent agenda?
Councilmember Dorr?
Second.
All right, great. We have a motion from councilmember Agnew, a second from councilmember Dorr to approve the consent agenda. City clerk?
Could I speak to the motion? I just wanted to point out, I, I'm not sure when it happened or if I somehow missed something, but I am concerned that the vouchers appear to not say what the checks are for anymore. And I don't know if that's just a different format when I open it. I don't, I haven't expanded it enough, but I just wanted to check on that because we used to be able to see what the checks were made out to. But this last time when I opened it, it looked like it was just amounts and check numbers, but not who it was to. But I'm wondering if it's user error.
City manager, if you have a, or something to look back into?
We can look into that. We're actually going to be making some changes and the vouchers will be posted along with the public agenda beginning October 15th. And so we'll be sure to, if there are any changes that need to happen, staff will have to go through and look at the documents prior to being publicly posted, so we'll make sure that all the information is there.
Thank you.
All right, city clerk with the vote?
Please say yay, hear your name when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Yay.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yay.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yay.
Thank you. Councilmember McNeil?
Yay.
Mayor Olson?
Yay.
Councilmember Dorr?
Yay.
Councilmember Agnew? Councilmember Agnew, hear your name?
Yay.
Yay.
Thank you, passes seven zero.
All right, thank you, everyone. So that item passes, our consent agenda passes. Onto our next agenda item, AB 20-106, consideration of the Lot D disposition.
I'm still there, huh? Right there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm here to present to you.
It's kind of, oh, yep. I've been cooking all day.
The item of consideration for the disposition of Lot D. We're still having some muting challenges, there we go. So this item asks the council to consider entering into a purchase and sale agreement with Trammell Crowe Residential for the development of Lot D. If approved, the proceeds from the sale of Lot D will be used to rebuild the city's fund balance, pay for downtown cleanup, and backfill the city hall lease payments as necessary. So the city had formally entered into a purchase and sale agreement, which the council in 2017 had elected not to move forward with. And so the city continued in its cleanup of this property. And then through the broker that the city council approved to hire, we posted the, or listed the property for sale. It generated a tremendous amount of interest. Downtown Bothell continues to be a desirable place for developers to come and to continue to be part of the downtown redevelopment. And it's an exciting time for the city of Bothell. Trammell Crowe was submitted an outstanding proposal. They're very committed to coming to Bothell. They're very excited about coming to Bothell. We provided in the marketing materials for the property information about the council's desire for this project to be a gateway project. Information about the visual preference study that council had participated in was included. And so the developer understands how critical the development of this corner parcel is to the downtown and to our ability to really have that gateway project. So we are excited to have them as a proposal. They are a national developer, they are well-financed. They have built over 250,000 residential units. And they really have built some very dynamic projects. And we look forward to working with them if it's council's desire to enter into this purchase and sale agreement. They've already scheduled their pre-application with the community development department and are very eager to get going if approved. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, who has questions on this agenda item? Deputy Mayor Zorns?
In the interest of expediency, can I just use this time to make a comment? I just want to say, regardless of our economic times, poor Lot D and EFNG, our gateway just is barren lots. And so I'm really eager to see something go in. And I, two things. One is, very much appreciate that they understand council's desire for gateway treatment. And looking at the projects that were submitted along in our packet, they look like the right people to make that happen. There's some very nice, interesting buildings there. The other thing that I take, especially with COVID, and thinking about what if this was a, you know, a major plague, and we have so much density, I've become keenly concerned in air circulation through, around large buildings. And both in a preliminary sketch, which I know could change, but looking at some of their other design buildings, it looks like they are very, very thoughtful in how they structure their buildings for not just aesthetics, but how the environment works around them. So I'm eager to see this project come together. So thank you.
Councilmember Dewar?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also really excited that we have a developer who seems to understand what we're looking for and is excited to be in Bothell. So I'm hoping for a really great partnership as we move forward. And I'm really glad to hear they have sensitivity to our concerns about really creating a gateway for our city. I think this is a once-in-a-almost-lifetime opportunity to create something really special that presents a front door to our city from 522. And I'm excited to see what they do with that corner and how they market. And I think they have the design capabilities to do that. So I just want to welcome them and thank them for being excited to work on this project with us.
Councilmember McCullough?
I just wanted to say how excited I am. This is a gateway project in the Bothell, and this is the perfect match. This company wants to create kind of place for people to come, an apartment, small businesses downstairs and on the street level. We're really excited to have them. So I say thank you to the city manager and to all of our staff for bringing them to us.
Councilmember Agnew?
I too would like to thank the city manager and the city staff for doggedly going after this and looks like getting the right people to do the right job. I, like the rest of my council members, can't wait to see this come to fruition. Nicely done, by the way.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Echo the same comments as before. A question I would have for the city manager is, what drove this developer to want to partner with Bothell? And part of, forgive me, because I had some technical difficulties when you were giving your update. So I'd just love to hear that.
I think that Bothell continues to be a desirable place for developers to come. This is one of the few flat parcels that is now near being cleaned, where we have a consent decree. And so that's very enticing for developments, to see developers, to see that the city has taken responsibility for the cleanup. And then with the consent decree, the state then takes on liability for the property. And it's just a great downtown. They can see how vibrant we are. They can see that council's engaged, and they're excited to be able to be part of what we've done here in downtown Bothell.
Well, thank you for that. Exciting and fabulous work getting this purchase and sale agreement.
All right, did everyone speak that wanted to? Councilmember Thompson?
I think everybody spoke with me, so I feel like I probably should have something to say. I was just really encouraged in the packet by how clear it was made that staff was, it's very pointed about just sort of the desires we had for the gateway property, the visual preference, some of these things like that. I too really enjoyed some of the examples of what Trammell Crowe has built. And I'm also excited to see what goes in there and also just to have something there.
Great, so I agree with everything that's been said so far. This has definitely been a long time coming. You know, all the dollars the city has spent to regain this valuable property within the heart of downtown. You know, it's wonderful that it can get activated and add additional residents to the downtown core. That'll just make everything work so much better and bring it even that much more to life. So you can hardly wait for it to be constructed and start getting used. Councilmember Dewar?
Just wanted to move the recommended action.
Councilmember Agnew?
I'd be happy to second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Dewar to authorize the city manager to execute the purchase and sale agreement with Maple Multifamily Land, Texas LP, for the purchase of property known as Lot D in the amount of $12,750,000. And a second by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion? Saying none, City Clerk?
Say yay, your name when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zorns?
Yay.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yay.
Councilmember McCullough? I need to mute her. Councilmember McCullough?
Yay.
Thank you. Councilmember McNeil?
Very excited, yay.
Mayor Olson?
Yay.
Councilmember Dewar?
Yay.
Councilmember Agnew?
Woo hoo, yay!
Motion passes seven zero.
Awesome, thank you, everyone. Great. How's everyone feel about a five-minute break? All right, we'll take a five-minute break, be back here at 6:50. All right, welcome back. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda. AB 20-107, consider approving a subordination agreement. Consider approving a subordination agreement related to the refinance of Riverside Landing Apartments. We'll go over to City Attorney Paul Byrne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, on the meeting, we have Mr. We have Mr. Corey Baldwin, who is the Director of Acquisitions for Shelter Resources Incorporated, and he will be giving tonight's presentation. Mr. Baldwin?
Good afternoon, everybody. Appreciate this opportunity to come and represent our project here in the refinance of Riverside Landing. I'm sure you've read in the package. We originally developed Riverside Landing back in nineteen ninety-seven is when we secured all the financing and then completed construction in nineteen ninety-nine. The project is a fifty-unit affordable housing property serving seniors in Bothell, over on to the other side of the river there. Given, sort of backing up here, as you guys may know, affordable housing comes with a lot of different restrictions, requirements, and funding sources. So it's part of the financing that we used to secure and create the housing about twenty years ago. We entered into an agreement with ARCH, a Coalition of Regional Coalition for Housing, which provided financing to construct the units. That was part of the total development sources, along with permanent debt and tax credit equity. In two thousand and fourteen, when the project ended its initial tax credit compliance period, it still has long-term regulatory restrictions keeping it affordable housing. But sort of the way the financing mechanisms work, this initial fifteen-year period, when we got to the end of that period, we refinanced the property with a ten-year loan as the senior loan used to construct the property came due. At that time, due to the regulatory agreement with the city of Bothell through ARCH, a subordination was needed to put on that new loan to pay off our senior loan that was coming due. So, and now, sort of fast forward six years, we've got a loan that is coming due in about three to four years at a sort of above-market interest rate. And so, our goal as the owner is to preserve Riverside Landing as affordable housing for the long term. But in order to sort of effectuate that plan, we needed to, or we need time to secure the resources necessary to renovate and preserve the property for the long term. As such, we're sort of looking to capitalize on this low-interest rate environment and put on a new loan that will give us the necessary time to seek financing from the Washington State Housing Finance Commission as well, probably a number of other soft sources or subordinate sources of financing to preserve Riverside Landing. All that being said, I represent Shelter Resources, who was the original developer and is the general partner in the deal. We're a local real estate or affordable housing development company based here in Bellevue. It's been active in affordable housing for about thirty-five to forty years, having done about a hundred and fifty different affordable housing projects and about six thousand, sixty-five hundred units in that time, solely dedicated towards affordable housing, whether it's building new deals like Riverside Landing was twenty years ago or acquiring sort of market-rate deals that function as affordable housing and putting them into the affordable housing program or preserving existing properties as affordable housing long term. So, quick history on us and sort of what we're looking. So, as part of our refinance, we need a new subordination agreement to be signed by the city of Bothell as part of that plan. Yeah.
Councilmember Dour?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I guess I'm not understanding what the refinancing is for. So, was the original loan paid off? And is the refinancing in order to make renovations? Or I guess I just, I'm not quite understanding what the meaning of the phrase is?
When we originally, sorry, when we originally built the property, the loan, the existing loan at that time, had a fifteen-year term on it. And so, in two thousand and fourteen, that loan came due, and we put on a new loan that actually matures in about three years. However, we've got, it's going to take us probably four to five years to put together the financing to preserve the deal. And so, with that sort of timeline facing us, we wanted to create an opportunity, given the low-interest rate environment, refinance the existing loan while we pursue a long-term preservation of Riverside Landing, at which time, a more extensive renovation would be done. At this time, we will be doing some light renovations, some little deferred maintenance here and there. But for the most part, the property is in a state where it doesn't require or necessitate significant renovation at this time. So really, it's just trying to capitalize on low-interest rates to create the necessary time for a longer-term preservation of the property.
For renovation? I mean, is it like a home equity loan? Like, you're taking out, you know what I'm saying, equity in order to pay for renovation? Or is this still part of the existing loan that's been extended? That's what you're not extending?
Yeah, this would be a whole new loan. So, we would pay off the existing loan with, I think it's Opus Bank right now, and put on a new loan through Fannie Mae that is really, I mean, really, it's just to replace the existing financing and extend out the term. But in order to do that, a loan through Fannie Mae is to provide some most advantageous terms, rates, and conditions for us.
Okay. I think I get it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
I can appreciate, what you're asking Bothell to do, the city of Bothell to do, is to subordinate themselves so that you can do the maintenance and revitalization and preservation. And our North Shore Senior Citizen Center, trying to say that fast one time, is living proof that if you don't maintain something that's very needed, it's going to cost you more in the long run. So, I have no problem with the city of Bothell subordinating themselves to this. What I would like to do, and this just occurred to me, is at some point, could council members tour your facilities there so that we can see what affordable housing after twenty years looks like, what you're having to deal with? Because affordable housing is a question that is on our plate and in our minds constantly. And it would be nice to kind of see somebody who's been doing it for a while, the wisdom and what twenty years of mileage looks like on affordable housing.
Yeah, no, we would love the opportunity to take any and all, you know, members who'd be interested in touring the property. Or even, we own a number of properties here in Bellevue, Kenmore, you know, in this surrounding area that we could take folks to and show you and hear sort of how affordable housing ages, as well as, you know, probably talk you through some of the challenges that we face, especially in the immediate future, which is the extremely scarce resources that there are within the state to preserve or even create new affordable housing.
Right, well, I would appreciate it. I'm sure there's other council members who would appreciate it. And if our city manager doesn't mind us putting her as the middle point woman on this, that would be great. And Corey, thank you for explaining this. It was very, very helpful.
Yeah, no, not a problem. It sort of struck us by surprise that we, you know, we actually needed to get a subordination agreement, you know, sort of.
There's always something.
Always something.
Councilmember McCullough?
So let me ask you this question. During this pandemic, how has the affordable housing community survived it?
You know, we have taken a number of steps to try to ensure the safety of our residents, just knowing, you know, how, for lack of a better word, like other sort of senior facilities or, you know, independent living or senior housing is has been pretty hotspots for COVID and coronavirus. We've limited, you know, access or not entry into the building to make sure it's just the residents or it's, you know, very specific people that, you know, we're not creating a place for a number of in-and-outs and people to get onsite to potentially either bring COVID onsite or if, you know, God forbid, you know, one of the residents had it, you know, spread it out into the community. You know, it actually made the refinancing of this loan quite tricky. Because like typically, you know, you'd go and have a number of third-party reports done, you know, appraisals, market study, you know, those sorts of things. But, you know, we had to work with the Fannie Mae, the agency on waivers and approvals to virtually tour the properties and get approvals that way. So, you know, we take safety of our residents very safe, you know, highly and really try to limit the people who can come in and come out of our properties and stuff.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. So, yeah, affordable housing and making sure that we have affordable housing for some of the most vulnerable in our communities is critically important. And making sure they have a safe environment to live is just as important. And so, thank you for your work on that. I do want to make sure that for those listening in our council meeting, they understand what subordinating means. What in fact is it that you're asking the city to do?
So, we've got a regulatory agreement with the city of Bothell that was sort of, the reason we've got that is because we received funding as part of, from ARCH, a regional coalition for housing, which is a consortium. For people who don't know, ARCH is, the acronym is, is a consortium of sort of east-side cities that the cities sort of pool money into a big pot that then ARCH uses or allocates to the projects that come and apply for funds. So, when, then you get that financing in place, then a subordination agreement sort of through ARCH, but then transfers to the city that the project's going to be built is created. And so, the funny thing is, this subordination agreement is one of, I think, about three or four that are currently on the property. And the, you know, the terms and restrictions are, Riverside Landing will stay affordable housing for, you know, about forty years. So really, what the regulatory agreement does is it restricts the occupancy and the rent of the residents at the property. And because it's a recorded document against the title of the property, you know, it's a, it's not something that's easily, you know, gotten rid of or removed from the property. And the regulatory with the city of Bothell is currently subordinated to the Washington State Housing Finance Commission's tax credit regulatory agreement, which, you know, additionally restricts the occupancy and the rents at the property. For, I think on that agreement, it's about forty years that the total restrictions are in place. And so, what we're asking the city to do is to keep that regulatory agreement in place, keep it subordinate to the existing regulatory agreements that are in place, such as the Washington State Housing Finance Commission Tax Credit Regulatory Agreement, and then additionally subordinate it to the first lien lender, so this new lender who will be in place. As they sort of need, in order to receive the loan, they need foreclosure rights. If for some reason, something happened at the property and they had to foreclose the loan, they want, they need that power within the documents. However, in our forty years of housing, we've never had a loan foreclosed on. We've never had, you know, any sort of active default. We take our reputation very seriously and are looking to do another forty years of affordable housing in the Pacific Northwest. And so, we never let a regulatory agreement or any sort of active default occur. So, really, what we're just asking the city to do is to continue this sort of subordination to the existing regulatory agreements that are in place. But just to add one more with this new loan that we're looking to refinance with.
Okay, thank you. Is there any costs associated with that to the city of Bothell?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, that's what I was looking to get out of you. So this is a partnership that we're doing with you to create affordable housing. And this is something that we're doing as a benefit to our community to have affordable housing within our community. Is that correct?
Yeah, and creating the mechanism or the time necessary to keep Riverside Landing, you know, affordable housing for another forty years here, when the opportunity presents itself to support the funding.
And this is part of the programming with ARCH that we've been working on? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And Councilmember McNeil, just so you know, we did run this by ARCH prior to the recommendation, the recommended action of having the city manager sign the subordination agreement. Director Cotterman from Community Development, I reached out to ARCH and had them review it and make suggestions.
Fabulous, thank you. Just making sure that I fully understand it. The community understands that this is a very positive thing, so, thank you.
Alright. Councilmember Agnew?
I move that we authorize the city manager to execute the attached subordinate agreement.
Councilmember Dour? Alright, we have a motion by Councilmember Agnew for the recommended action, and we have a second by Councilmember Dour. Any discussion on the item? Right, seeing none? City clerk?
Say yea or nay when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yea.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yea.
Mayor Olson?
Yea.
Councilmember Dour?
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yea.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. I appreciate your efforts on this.
No, thank you guys for your time and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Bye.
Alright, on to AB twenty dash one zero eight. Direction regarding the use of public streets and right-of-way in downtown Bothell. Over to city manager Jennifer Phillips.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So, this item is seeking direction from the city council with regards to the closures on Main Street and One Hundred and First in the downtown area of Bothell. So, as you heard with the public comment earlier and the public comments that you received as a part of this item, we, the council directed staff to implement the closure on Main Street. And then also, we followed up with an additional closure on One Hundred and First based on council's discussion and working with the business directly there on One Hundred and First. So those closures have been in place for a couple of months now. And they're in response to the COVID crisis. And you can see the positive impacts by the comments from the speaker and certainly from enjoyment from the community. In the agenda bill, information was provided that there certainly have been positive outcomes. We did receive some feedback from a few businesses that it had a negative impact on their businesses. So, there's been a little bit of mixed results in the downtown. So I want to make sure that all businesses had a voice. I know how important equity is for the council and that this was equal for everyone in the downtown. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was added so that those businesses also had a voice in this process. When I originally brought this item before council, we had discussed that this closure would end right after Labor Day, thinking that the schools would be back in session. And with the schools comes significant traffic in our downtown. Since UW-Bothell, Cascadia College, and North Shore School District are all still going virtual, there's an opportunity to continue this closure. And I had selected a date of October 26th because the CARES Act money, um, to be able to be reimbursed for the CARES Act money, all expenses need to be, um, expended by the end of October. Uh, what we've discovered in the last couple of days is, as we've calculated now, the city's costs, eligible costs related to the response to COVID and, um, the, the expenses that can be reimbursed through the CARES Act money, the 1.4 million that was provided by the state through the CARES Act money, um, the city's expensive has far exceeded the $500,000 that have been allocated. We're looking at, at multiple millions of dollars. And so, um, there really is no CARES Act money available to pay for these closures, nor to pay for, um, the extension of these closures. And I just want to make sure the council is aware of that, that this would just be general fund, regular tax dollars that would be covering the cost of the closures that have already happened and any extensions that the council might consider. Um, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, and I'm looking for council direction. Assistant City Manager Kelly Mazzoli is also with us because she's done so much work on, uh, the CARES Act funding. And if you had questions about that, she's here as well. But we're happy to answer any questions you might have. And I'm looking for direction on, on what to do in the downtown.
Councilmember McCullough?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Could I request that we separate Main Street discussion from 101st closure? I think they're two separate entities. Main Street does not have ongoing cost as I think, uh, city manager Jennifer Phillips that I talked about today, but 101st does. So, could we separate the discussions? So, we do Main Street first and 101st second to discuss about leaving them open?
Yeah, it can be part of people's questions and comments, I would say, as we progress through this discussion. Um... Councilmember Dewar? Councilmember Dewar? My mic on? Okay. Someone else have a question? Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you. Um, I know, I think... I really totally support keeping Main Street closed down. It's a community event for our people. They all seem to enjoy it. Our businesses really care about having people, um, laundering through downtown, through Main Street. And I would also request that we don't put an ending date on it, but look... Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Councilmember McCullough.
Okay. So, so I would request...
Can you hear me now?
I would request that we don't put an ending date on it, but revisit it in October, at the end of October. So, that would be my request.
Councilmember Dewar? Looks like you're having some technical difficulties? Deputy Mayor Zornst, did I see yours?
Okay, my, my video is frozen.
Councilmember Dewar, maybe if you turn off your video, if it's freezing anyways, our AV said that could possibly help.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thanks for the presentation. What I, what I'm curious about is, so, the 22, 2250 per month is just for the closure of 101st? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, the, uh, as Councilmember, um, McCullough pointed out, so the closure of Main Street isn't currently costing us anything for rental of divides or, uh, whatever those blocks are called?
That's correct. Uh, for the ecology blocks, there's no cost at this time. Uh, what we're, what the city is not receiving is income for the rental of the public right of way. So, we're losing revenue, but there is no direct cost. The cost will only be associated with the, with the ultimate removal of, of all of that. Um, but since it's been installed, there's no maintenance or ongoing cost at this time.
So, are, um, but I, I understand that we're having, uh, extra garbage pickup. Is that something that has a monetary value on it that, um, is costing the city?
No, we've maximized under the contract that we have with ecology. We've maximized the number of pickups allowed under our contract. And then we're also bringing in, um, staff. Some of it might be on overtime. We're bringing in crews on the weekends to empty the receptacles. We've also added additional receptacles to try to manage the amount of waste that's occurring in the downtown.
Okay. And then I, I may have missed this with my technical difficulties, but, um, so in the packet, it sounded like we had CARES money, but now we don't. So, can you explain what happened? Did we just get a new report? And that's why we thought we had money, but we don't? Or did something else change in terms of definitions that we can now claim?
Uh, no, it's actually, it's, it's our work on the report. So, um, under the, the eligibility requirements, we're trying, we're all trying to figure out what that means and making sure that all of our, the costs that are attributed to COVID can be reimbursed. And so, when this first occurred, we had no idea, um, what those might be and how much it might add up to. And what we've determined over the last couple of days, as we finalized the costs that are eligible to be recovered by the COVID, um, funding, the, the CARES Act funding is well over three, four, potentially five million dollars. And so, that's the new information that's come to light, is that our expenses far, far exceed the monies that we're receiving through the CARES Act. And so, there, there really isn't CARES Act money available to cover these costs.
Okay. And then I just wanted to weigh in, um, that, did the, so Mayor, we're only going to talk about Main Street first and then 101st second? Is that correct? That's what Councilmember McCullough requested. I just wasn't sure.
That was the request. Um, we can handle that. We can handle it that way.
Okay. So, I'll just weigh in on, my preference would be, um, to extend the, um, Main Street opening till October and then reevaluate then, um, if we want to do, I, I think we need to kind of do this in a kind of slow motion way and see what, uh, what the cold weather brings and if it's still something that we think we should extend in October. So, my, um, preference would be to extend the Main Street closure until, um, the end of October, as per the, um, staff recommendation. Or I guess, the 26th was mentioned in the packet, so, per the packet. That's all. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zornst?
Um, yeah, I'm fine separating discussion of the two, or we can talk about it all at the same time. Uh, I, I will be really candid that I am troubled that one of the closures, the city is subsidizing for one business, basically one business, that is not a shared space, uh, for other businesses in Bothell. And, and, and when we talk about equity, that is far from being equitable. Um, so I, I have concerns. I mean, we, we really want our businesses to survive and we want to help, but how much can Bothell bleed for that? Is, I, I hope that doesn't sound over dramatic. Um, we got, uh, a, a great letter from the owner of Vine, who was also very appreciative. But what I, what struck me, uh, and their, the comments from them was their heart to be team players and helping to shoulder what this is costing Bothell. Um, I am fine for the close, especially since, um, we don't have heavy traffic on Main Street right now because of, um, uh, the demands of, uh, schools and things. I'm fine keeping Main Street closed past October, but I think at some point we need to probably ask, if you have a tent pitched out there, we, we, it was important to us that we help you tread water and get your financial feet under you, but, but now we need you to help out. And, um, if you have space staked out on Main Street, we need to have a conversation about how do you help shoulder the cost of that so that, so that we have garbage covered and, um, related city costs. Uh, those are my concerns. Um, I am fine with closure, I, for Main Street, just talking about Main Street, and I'm fine for extending that. But I think at some point we need to have a discussion of where do businesses step in, especially if they're using street space. Where do they step in and start helping shoulder some of the burden? That's my two bits.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yeah, I, I think it's, uh, I, I think we can probably move and, and try to keep Main Street open a little bit. I'm not sure, uh, if it should be extended past, uh, October 26th. Uh, the forecast for the winter is we're going to get a little bit of snow. And, uh, I think it'd be, even if you had a tent with a nice little fireplace in it, it'd be a little inclement to be out there. So, uh, I'd be for extending, uh, Main Street to October 26th at this point in time.
Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a couple thoughts on this. Um, you know, when we first, uh, decided to do this, I don't think anybody anticipated that the pandemic that we're dealing with would last as long as it appears to be. Um, and we have done something pretty cool for the restaurants that are involved. And, um, you know, they've, we, like, like we heard, um, you know, people have hired more. Um, the business is doing far better than they were in the months preceding that. And we realized some tax revenue from that as well. But if we don't see this through until the end of the pandemic, it feels like we just postponed the inevitable meeting. And if our goal is to help our businesses survive this pandemic, stopping while I think they're restricted to 25%, um, it seems like it'd be pretty tough on them, uh, especially as we go into the winter. Um, you know, phase four is the first phase that the state will allow restaurants to operate at more than 50% capacity. Um, and, you know, this has been really popular. We've had thousands of residents sign on saying they want this to continue. Um, the, there are certainly some concerns that I think we should address, but, but overall, I, I don't see any reason why we would have done this for three months and then stop. Um, so, I, I very much would like to see this continue. Um, I, I think if we want to help our businesses, we, we should keep doing the same thing. Um, other municipalities have just recently started doing what we're doing. I think Seattle, just over the last few weeks, has started issuing outdoor permits. Um, you know, right now, um, in current guidelines, they can only close off two sides of a tent. Um, but the businesses that I've spoken to on Main Street have planned for this. They're looking at heaters. Um, they're confident in their ability to operate into the winter, um, outside. Um, the, um, let's see, I have notes. Um, the, um, I, I think we should temporarily extend both roads until October 26th. Um, and in the meantime, um, we should have staff take a look at what it would cost to charge for the permits, a break even amount for the city. Um, just so we're not bearing this load completely. We're giving them essentially what it's costing us in order to do this. So, you know, we add up the cost to rent materials, the adding garbage service, whatever that is, figure, I mean, I'll let you guys figure out exactly how to do it. Um, but I would love to, when we have this discussion in a couple of months, to have had staff come back and say, hey, here's how this could be sustainable, um, to help them weather this crisis. Um, and, and I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, that will give us time to communicate with the businesses on Main Street and 101st and help us make a better decision long-term moving forward, uh, with a process and communicating with them. And we know that way that we've done the work to make sure that, that this is sustainable for us. So, we're not bearing more than we want to, and we're still offering them the support that we intend to do. Um, that's, I think, what I would like to see coming out of this meeting tonight. Um, oh, the other, the other thing, um, that, um, I, I heard, and I don't remember who mentioned it earlier, um, adding some temporary disabled parking or ADA parking, um, on 101st, I think would be a phenomenal idea, depending on, um, obviously what the process is for that. Um, I, I brought that up with the city manager, uh, a month or two ago, and she mentioned it was very difficult. I'm not sure what goes into that. Um, but I think we should look at that just to make sure that we're doing everything we can for the businesses that are there. Um, because I don't know how long it's going to be until we are through phase three and restaurants can survive on indoor seating. Um, I, I fear it's going to be longer than we all wish it were. So, um, again, just to summarize, um, I would love to see both streets extended, but in the meantime, for our staff to develop a plan to make this sustainable for us, um, for however long it takes us to get through this pandemic and have that process with those businesses, communicate with them and make sure that everybody's happy with the outcome.
Councilmember McNeil?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, well, I'm super encouraged and excited about what we as a council did, uh, to help support and what our city's doing to help support, uh, the businesses, uh, along Main Street and downtown. Um, you know, after we, we closed the two streets, um, many people reached out to us and thanked us for the closure of those streets. But there's been several, um, businesses within the area that have also reached out and said how it has had an impact on them. And so, you know, I heard Deputy Mayor Zornst, uh, bring up the word equity, fairness and equity. Um, I think it, I think it's important for us to, to listen and learn from the decision that we made on the positive impacts that it had, but also the potential negative impacts that it has on, on other businesses. I don't think any business within our, our city wants to adversely affect another business. Uh, but sometimes we need to make sure that we take a, a much broader, bigger look at the, the whole picture. Um, while we may say that the cost to have the barricades up, um, there's not a cost to the city to do that. We're hearing about, you know, trash pickup and things like that. Um, and 101st, you know, because of the barricades out there, it's only, it's only helping one business. Well, if one business is successful and other businesses is not, is that the right, is that the right decision to make? But is that one business helping support, support other businesses? So, I think for me, what I would like us to do is, is a council, is, is take a look at the whole thing on, on what we're trying to accomplish, uh, with this. And I think I'm hearing that the, the CARES Act funding is, is, you know, $3 million. We don't have, we have 1.4 and we've, we got $3 million. Um, I think the most important thing is, is we start to look at being fiscally responsible. We're going into a, a budget meetings, um, and we have to balance a budget, and every decision that we make, um, adversely affects that. And our community, I think, you know, from what I'm hearing from our community, they want us to be fiscally responsible. And I think we're all talking about it. We're all, we're all trying to go that direction. So, as we make these decisions, um, you know, thinking long-term, um, as many of you say, we want to think long-term, what, what does a full closure of Main Street look like? Um, do we have impacts on transportation? Do we have impacts on other businesses? Um, I hear from many businesses throughout our community, uh, that they're struggling right now. And they're not just on Main Street, they're throughout our entire community. Um, you know, you have youth groups at youth sports, things like that, that we can't even get together right now. And so, I think that how we approach not only Main Street, but all of our businesses within our community, within our community, I think are going to be important. I know we, we put forward something to help out businesses to have permitting in parking lots. Well, what, what does that, what does that look like right now? Is that costing the city any money? So I, I think as I listen to all of you talk, it makes me want to engage more and get more information. I know we are overworked right now at the city, but when we make our decisions, I want to make sure we're making decisions based on factual information, and we have a chance to digest it. Because again, at the end of the day, if we make a decision and, and three businesses are successful and five businesses fail, in my eyes, you know, not everybody's going to win, but is that really a success? And I think all of our businesses deserve us as a group, as a council, and as a city to, to look at them equitably and equally.
All right, so, so everyone's had a chance to speak on the, the Main Street. So city manager, are you looking for, I mean, you're looking for direction on what to do with both of these streets? So I was hearing, I was hearing pretty strong in favor of keeping Main Street closed for the, the duration of the recommended action until October 26th. I don't know if we need to do a vote. I think everyone was speaking in favor of that. So, so let's say if anyone has any opposition, if you want to. I don't think we need to do a vote on it, on that one, is what I'm trying to say. On that one, but I think Councilmember McNeil brought up a good point on if we want to consider the long-term activities or, or if it continues to go past October 22nd. And there was even, you know, some residents were requesting and suggesting that it becomes permanent. I mean, definitely for a permanent action, I think we would need to have some sort of transportation, traffic study. This is definitely a busy, active corridor through our, our downtown. Will be 185th is going to be our transit corridor through in the future. So I think if Main Street gets closed permanently, we would have to look how that would affect 185th and the BRT route that would be coming through there. And so I, I would say we would need to do, we would have to start some type of study very soon, because these can take two months to complete, you know, a month, two months, three months. And if we're just pushing it off until the end of October and we're looking to get additional information at that time, I think we would have to, you know, we can continue with these bandages and, you know, going piecemeal on this. But I, I think if we want to have a robust conversation on that, we need to have the technical study as well as, you know, continue the public outreach, you know, that, that I think as a council, we're always striving for, getting the participation in it. Because people are definitely coming to us, but it's always a challenge if everyone's hearing about it or, you know, getting, getting the word out and getting that response. City manager.
I just wanted to clarify then for the closure, why don't we go ahead and do it through the end of October and I'll come to council on November 3rd with an item. We will not be able to do any type of an in-depth study. You'll have to consider that as part of the budget workshop or the final budget and determine whether that's something you'd like us to work on in '21, '22. So we'll sort of need to, I understand and I agree that it, it needs a far more detailed, a closure, a full closure needs a far more detailed analysis. And we could look at that as part of the work in '21, '22. But for the decision, for the temporary closures, to come back to council on November 3rd and we can look at the Farmer's Almanac and look at the weather and how the businesses continue to provide feedback. But just for, I think for ease, rather than arbitrary date, November 3rd would be the date that I would return.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, I like the idea of doing a study. And, and in that study, I would like the fire and the police to weigh in. Right now, since we've closed Main Street, they don't have access to those buildings the way they used to. And we need to take that into consideration.
All right, so that's, I think, gets us through the Main Street, but now we have the topic of 101st. Councilmember McAuliffe.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure we also talk about the parking spaces for the restaurants, which is like the Cottage and Julio's, which we allowed them to use their parking spaces. So in this conversation, should we be discussing them as well? I guess that's a question for our city manager.
That was an agendized in tonight's packet. But we could certainly bring that back for council's discussion. I can't remember, City Attorney Vern, do you remember? We had a date, was it a six-month? Did we have to return? Or what was the date on, on, on that? I can't, I can't recall how long that, the use of that private property for, for any was.
I don't remember off the top of my head. I got to look back.
But we can, we can certainly schedule that and bring that back to the council for further discussion.
Right, thank you.
So 100, 101st. Councilmember Agnew.
You know, I, I think with 101st, it's a whole different item. I, I think that we have one business that is profiting from that, and other businesses aren't doing so well. In fact, I think they've been hindered by that. And I think we need to take that into consideration, and it is one street that is costing us, the city. I, I don't know if we want to reach out to the business that is profiting from that and ask them if they want to foster the, the burden of the cost. I, I, I don't know if they'd want to do that, but I, I, I think that's a whole different item. I think we need to think about opening that street up.
Councilmember Thompson.
I think on 101st, if we are looking at not doing it on 101st purely because of cost, I would be very uncomfortable voting to stop that without having a more robust conversation with the business owner. It seems like there's a, a good opportunity for us to have a conversation about what that might look like, to make it sustainable for us and for the business. Because, you know, we heard overwhelmingly from our community that our community was in favor of that. We got hundreds of emails about that, and that wasn't very long ago. And it seems to be very popular. It seems to be working very well. And if our, if our big concern is financial, I, I think it would be wise to have a conversation with the business owner or, you know, look at possibly more sustainable ways to block that street off or have a, have a conversation about what that might look like. I don't think I would be comfortable with the amount of information that we have right now, kind of pulling the rug out from that in this meeting.
Deputy Mayor Zorn's.
Yeah, I, I agree. A conversation would be good, and a part of that conversation would also be maybe to bring other businesses that are impacted by a ripple effect. It, it may be a place for the city to step in and be a, I don't know, I hate to put our city manager and, or assistant city manager in the middle on this. But there are businesses that are impacted who don't have access to their parking on their own, to their own business, because one business is moving a food truck over in and blocking parking spots for them. And there's the cost. So as Councilmember Thompson was saying, have a conversation, see if they're willing to come into the, come to the table to have a conversation about how to be a team player on this so that they benefit, but other businesses are not hurt. And if they're willing to have that conversation, then let's see what we can do. That's, that's, those are my thoughts on that. And, and if they're not willing to have that conversation, then, then that's a whole kettle of fish as well. I will say, I still do see, when I walk the dog down to the dog park, I still see people coming off of 522 to come up 101st and have to do a U-turn because 101st is blocked. And one of my concerns was about our emergency vehicles not just having access to the buildings. That's why we went with a half, just half the street. But having access for fire for both ends of those blocks, the west end on one and the east end on the other. But another concern that I had at the time when we were talking about this was being able to access the section between, on 522, between 101st down to 527. Now, shoots, shooting his murder was on the other side of that stretch, but it was in, within that stretch that I was concerned about, could emergency vehicles get down to? And thankfully, we had half that street open. But that is still part of what we need to consider is not just taking care of the downtown buildings, but can we take care of that section of 522? It's, it, it's complicated.
Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we ask the city manager, currently we're renting the Jersey barriers and blocks for that 101st Street closures? That's correct, right? That's what the 2250 is?
That's correct.
And we have, like, an agreement that ends on a certain date by which we need to make a decision to extend.
Okay, hon, thank you.
Hold on, no, we've contacted the company and, and we can continue renting those for an extended period of time.
But have we paid to a certain date, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Not that I'm aware of.
So we can.
I think the original was for two months.
Okay, I just wondered if, like, there's a prorated rate? Did we pay just till the, just till, like, like today or what? If there was some sort of agreement?
Director Lenhart may know. What I recall was it was two months and then we could extend beyond that.
Okay.
Currently, we, I'm sorry, we've currently rented them through that initial date, so through this coming weekend. But as the city manager said, we've reached out to them and they said that they could wait for a decision from this council on extending through October.
Okay, so it sounds, to me, it sounds like we have to have, we have to make a decision, do we not then? To extend or not extend to today?
I mean, a, a decision not to, a decision, no decision would mean that they would stay in place in my mind, and we would, we would pay the additional rental fee.
I, I do think Councilmember Thompson's and, and Mayor, Deputy Mayor Zorn's concerns about having a conversation with the own, the business owner and other business owners who are impacted, makes sense to me. I, I do think when we talk about equity, you know, there's the opportunity which we have on Main Street, and that's kind of something we can't help because we can't do that everywhere. But spending a certain amount of money that benefits just one business owner is, in my mind, an equity issue because it's completely different, because it's a cost that we're not incurring on Main Street. And so I do have concerns about that because we're not spending that money for other businesses in Bothell. So we can have a conversation where the business owner would cover that cost. He's already got, you know, a certain amount of time where he hasn't incurred costs, so maybe he'd be good with paying in it, paying for the next month or two. I think we kind of need to know that, because I don't think that we should continue without that sort of agreement in place.
Mr. Mayor, you're on mute.
Councilmember, Councilmember McAuliffe.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm really concerned. We have one business that really needs access, so we've closed the street. We have another business that says if we continue to close that street, they're going to go out of business. So I'm really concerned about this decision because I, I think a conversation is important, but the two businesses have both expressed their concerns. One wants it open and the other one wants it closed. I just think we have to make a decision, and my decision would be that we open 101st.
Mr. Mayor, you're on mute.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, this conversation brings me all the way back to the first conversation we had when we actually made the decision as a council to close these two roads. And the tough decision that we made at that time and the benefit that we thought we would receive from our businesses. So I, I'm encouraged by all the positive feedback that we've gotten by the decision that we made back then. I want to clarify with the city manager that, I think she said that, I just want to make sure I've got this right. If we don't take action on this tonight, then it will remain in effect, the barricade, the, the road will remain closed. If we want to change that, we would have to take action tonight to change that. Is that correct?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, to have, there is no, there is no legal. So to be very clear, the council had a discussion, the council made a decision to close Main Street. The council had a discussion about 101st but did not come to the conclusion and ultimately did not make a, a formal council decision on closing 101st. What you did is you expressed your support and your concerns about that closure, and then staff went and tried to find a creative solution that would, that would satisfy some of the concerns, but also provide the opportunity to have a closure for the business that requested it. So you've never actually made a decision for that closure. I'm the one who made the decision to do the closure based on the feedback from that meeting. So what, you could do either. What I'm saying is if, if you don't direct me either way, then I would just leave them in place. So it's, it's not a legal, it's, it's, it's a practical decision, right? So if there is no consensus and, and there's no specific direction, I would just leave the barricades in place until, until a further discussion occurred or I receive direction from the council.
And that would be basically that we would be absorbing how long we've had them now and then the cost till whenever you decided to remove them. Is that correct?
Until I'm, until I'm given direction from the council on whether to remove them. So it would be 2250 a month in a rental fee until I'm given direction to remove them.
Okay, so I, what I'm hearing then, Mr. Mayor, is that while we didn't make a decision previously, if we make no decision today, that there could be, there will be additional costs to the city. Okay.
All right, we've all made it through one round here, so I, I think looks like, just hearing how everyone came about their discussion and looked. and it looks like there's some people that want to add on to it. Uh, Councilmember Agnew.
Uh, I agree with Councilmember McAuliffe. I think we should o, open up a hundred and first.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yeah. Quick question for, uh, Director Lenhart. Um, you mentioned that the, the folks that were renting those Jersey barriers from were going to wait for us to make a decision. If we took a week to talk with the business owner and ask the business owner if they wanted to, um, pay for that cost, could we take one more week and then bring this back, um, next week? If they did not want to do that, if they declined and not be on the hook for another twenty two hundred dollars?
That, that's just too fast of a turnaround time for us. Friday is a furlough again. We can't possibly get that meeting scheduled, that information. The agenda bill, the packet is, goes public on Thursday. So next Tuesday is, is too fast of a turnaround.
Well, I mean, if all we're doing is just continuing a decision based on the, on the discussion tonight, and if it's just a simply a matter of saying, hey, Mr. Business Owner, this cost us twenty two fifty a month. Would you like to foot that bill? Um, that just gives us the opportunity to ask that business owner the question, um, without risking any further money. So I, I don't see what we need to prepare, um, for that.
I, I need to prepare an entire agenda bill that would be included in the packet on Thursday so that the council can rediscuss this item on Tuesday.
So yeah, so the.
So, but, but if, if we, if it weren't for the procedural issue and it weren't for just the fact that it, it's difficult to do that, would we incur any cost if we waited until next Tuesday?
My understanding is yes, we're renting, whether, whether we're renting them on a monthly basis, I, I, I don't know. Director, whether it's a monthly rental or weekly rental. I, I don't know, I don't know that specific detail.
I guess my, my big, my big concern here is that we're doing this based on something that, that business owner very well could say, hey, I would happily pay for that. And I don't want to make a decision to take that down without at least having that conversation with the business owner. And giving the business owner that opportunity. Um, and I don't know if that's something that we can vote on with, you know, if they're willing to do that, then we're okay continuing. And if not, we take it away. I, I don't know what that looks like without putting the city more at risk, but, um, I, uh, without having that conversation, I, it's really hard for me to take something away that, that we've done.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Uh, this is for the, uh, for our city manager. Could we put the decision out for two weeks? Would that give us time to get that on the agenda packet? And then I, and then, um, have the conversation about, are they willing to pay? Pay for that space? And also get them involved with, um, being cooperative with other business owners and making sure that they have full access to what they're paying rent on. Like their parking spots behind their building. So, um.
That's, that's, that's not how we designed the street. So if you recall, we had the hard barricades on the one side.
Right.
Soft barricades on the, on the other side.
Right.
And so access to that parking lot is, is, is accessible.
No, no, yeah, that's not, that's not our piece. It's, it's just allowing the, the other business owner who's impacted by this to have, to weigh in and say, I need you to conduct your business in a way that's not impeding my business. And, um, and see if that, those two pieces come together. They're willing to pay for the barricades and they're willing to make life easier for the neighboring businesses across the street. Those two pieces come together, then, um, then getting through, um, what we're, the time period that we're allowing for Main Street, I'm fine with. Um, but if those two pieces can't come together, then, then I'm just, you know, let, then, then let's just stick with Main Street and put a hundred and first back the way it was. That, that's my, that's my thoughts on that.
So yeah, so I, I agree. Pulling the barricades and opening it up tonight would be, I think, very much a, a challenge without the discussion. And yeah, this is, uh, a very challenging decision. Because it is, you know, affecting, it is helping some, it's hurting others. So it's, you know, there, there's currently not a, a win-win, uh, and it is costing the city revenue or it's costing us money, uh, that we're having to pay out for the rentals. So, you know, there's a, another negative to that there. So, you know, I, I think if it's possible for that two week, um, to have it brought back on the fifteenth, if staff can have a discussion, um, with the business, uh, the hopping hound, uh, to see what their thoughts are on it tonight. I, I think that would give us a better, it'll give us the additional information that I, I think we need to make the decision on, uh, what to do on the closure of a hundred first. So is any further discussion on this? Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, this actually is a very tough decision because, um, basically whatever decision you make, you're affecting one or another business. We've heard from, on the positive side and the negative side of this decision. I think, um, going two additional weeks, um, puts us two weeks, roughly two weeks away from the twenty six deadline anyway. And if we're going to extend, um, two weeks, the cost, if you just divide that in half, there might be a rental fee that you get for running two weeks is the same as a month. So I, I don't know the answer to that. Also don't know the answer, what does that two weeks look like for the business that's struggling right now? Um, so if we're gonna, we're gonna prolong it two weeks and give a benefit to a business for two weeks, but then another business is struggling for that two weeks and they're no longer with us because of the struggle. It, this, this is a tough decision. Um, and I would say we made, we, we had our discussions and we showed our support for something, um, previously. But, but at this time, I'm, I'm leaning towards i, if we, we should make a decision, either to extend them to the twenty sixth or to, uh, to remove them, um, next week. Because I don't, I don't think in two weeks, I think the city manager said that she could get it done in two weeks, but I, I don't think that we're going to be able to build the true impacts of that business in two weeks. So that's my opinion, um, or other businesses along there, um, or other, uh, impacts on other businesses around, not just on that street. So I'm struggling with this one. Um, but I just, at this point, I don't know, I don't know if I support, um, the two week.
Councilmember Doer.
I, I'm having the same struggle and I'm, I'm just wondering if we, uh, I feel like Solomon, King Solomon splitting the baby. Uh, what if we just make a call and just say, okay, we're going to extend it two weeks, but then we're done. We're just, we're, we're done. If we have to make a decision, I, um, I mean, we have public safety access concerns. There's no winning here. I, I literally feel like there's no winning. We, you know, we, we did what we did, um, we extended that, but I'm, I don't, I don't feel good about paying money for a, um, for one business to, to profit. While another business is suffering and, um, I guess I'm, I'm leaning more towards just maybe we extend it for a couple of weeks while the weather's still good. Then we're just, um, we'll just end it.
All right. Well, I think we're, we're, we're definitely wrestling with this decision and, and trying to, I think, trying to find some sort of compromise where we can just come to a, a consensus and, you know, finally make a, a decision on this item. So, you know, I, I believe there is, you know, some, some good weather still. I think we need to, you know, it'd be best if we provided some timeframe, uh, if we do choose to open the street again, uh, just so they can make accommodations for that. So, but yeah, it's, it's still, still struggling, yeah, on the choice on, uh, closing it or keeping it closed or opening it up, what kind of timeframe? Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Um, uh, can we put the ball in the, who, who, is it Director Lenhart that, who's, uh, looking at the billing for those barricades? Who, who looks at those buildings, you know, authorizes the billings for the barricades? And gives the call to come pick up?
It's, yes, it's within the public works.
Okay. So I guess here, um, I, I, what Councilmember Doer was saying is because that space is, is just open picnic areas. It's not, it's not sheltered. I can't imagine that going in the way it exists right now, um, going into the colder months, uh, the way it exists right now. So if I can put, here's my suggestion, put the ball into Director Lenhart's, um, court. If we can, if that can be prorated for two weeks, go for two weeks. If it's a solid month, then we just wrap it up for, well, I think maybe you guys need to weigh on whether we fish or cut bait, whether we just close it down before two weeks or go a month. And then we just open up a hundred and first. That gives the, a, a chance to enjoy the, the warm, warm weather. They're right now not equipped to go into the cold weather and it opens up a hundred and first. So that's, that, that, that's my, um, my thoughts on how we would manage this.
Councilmember Thompson.
I was just going to suggest that we could do something like what Councilmember Zorn said, um, but pending the owner willing to pay for the cost of the closure. So like we, we, we keep it for two weeks if, um, unless the owner is willing to pay the cost, something like that. Like I, I, I would just like to be able to have that conversation, um, with the owner of the business before we make a decision on this. Because cost is something that everybody has cited here. And if that weren't a factor, I think we'd be having a very different discussion.
Councilmember Agnew.
You know, uh, I think if we're going to have a, a, a talk with the business, let's talk with the businesses that are impacted. We have, we have a business that is, is literally struggling right now because of this closure. Uh, and, and we need to take that into consideration also.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
And I agree. One business that says unless you open the street, I'm not going to be able to survive. That's the point. The point is not the twenty five hundred dollars to the, the barricades. It's to say, how do we do something? When we have one business that says, I can't make it if you don't open the street. And the other one that says, I can't make it if you don't close the street. So it's, it's a really tough decision. But I am still weighing in on, you know, the parking lot is available. Even though the owner doesn't want to allow it, it is available. So they need to put some pressure on the owner of the parking lot to let them use that space and we need to open a hundred first. Uh, just the way I feel about it. I don't feel it's fair for one business to preside over another while that other one is probably going to go under. I don't think that's fair.
Councilmember Doer.
Um, I'm toying with just making a motion just to move things forward. Because I, I feel like we're talking in circles and, you know, apologies if people don't like this, but I'm just going to put something out there so we can vote and see if it passes. I vote we extend the barriers for two more weeks and then have the barriers removed up. I motion, um, that we extend the barriers being in place for two more weeks and then have them removed.
Councilmember or Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Second it.
All right. So we have Councilmember Doer, uh, with the motion to maintain the barricades in place for two weeks and then remove with, uh, Deputy Mayor Zorn's with the second. Any discussion on that? Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, the conversation was a struggle to get, um, back and forth through this conversation. But I want to make sure at the end of the day, the community knows that the reason why it took us so long to get through this conversation was because we're all struggling with ensuring that we all support our businesses. Um, both those that are being successful and those that are, are failing. And at the end of the day, the decision that me making today and supporting this motion is a motion where I feel that we're split fifty fifty, we're giving two additional weeks. And hopefully, at the end of the day, helping a business that's struggling, um, that they too will have some time. Uh, because I don't want to close with this as being just all about the money, because it's not. It's about ensuring that we have equity amongst all of our businesses within our community. And hopefully all business owners are listening to this, that this council does support you, um, this community supports you. And that's why this was a tough decision.
Councilmember Agnew.
Uh, I'll be supporting this motion. Uh, I, I feel it's, and it is a tough decision, uh, that, that we're making right now. But I, I think it's the best interest to the businesses of Bothell.
Councilmember Thompson.
I would, um, like to move to amend the motion that if the business that has been negatively affected that we've been talking about, um, comes back and there's a solution that they are okay with, and if the business that is currently operating in the street is willing to pay the cost, that we put something on the agenda for two weeks. And if those two conditions are satisfied, um, that we can have that discussion in two weeks. So I see lots of people's heads going sideways like this. Let me try to restate that and I'll try to be more clear this time. If the two businesses that are affected can have a conversation about what it might look like to have things work out for both of them, and they can work that out with no staff time caught up in this. And in two weeks, if we don't have to pay anything and the other business that has been affected is amenable to this being open, I, I think we should put something on the agenda for two weeks from now in case that happens so that we can take a vote to extend it if both of those businesses want to do it.
I think that's a challenging. What's that? No, there's no second yet. So.
Basically, I'm just moving to put something on the agenda for two weeks from now so that if there's new information, we can discuss with that new information. I'm not asking for staff to do anything, I'm just asking for an agenda item to be there in case new information comes up.
Councilmember Doer?
I'm gonna second because I wanted to say something about this. My concern is that the two business owners could come to some agreement, but that doesn't mean the city is amenable to that agreement. So I don't see how it's possible for there to be city, not be city staff time. And I don't think it's good policy to have businesses work out what works for them without city involvement. So, while I second it, I won't be supporting it, sorry.
All right, so we have a amendment by Councilmember Thompson to, I believe it's place an item on the agenda for two weeks to wait for, for, for additional information for the business owners to come back to council or to provide additional information to council. City Attorney?
Yeah, so this is a bit awkward. Essentially, what Councilmember Thompson is asking, and Councilmember Thompson, please correct me if I'm wrong, you're essentially asking for postponement of the final determination of this item. Is that correct?
Yes, well, no, so I'm, I'm, so the motion on the floor that I'm amending is that we extend it for two weeks and then close it. Basically, what I want to do is have one more conversation about this before then. So that if we want to, if for whatever reason we want to redo the decision that if this motion passes we would make tonight, we have the opportunity to talk about it. But we, the, the motion that I'm amending would close that in two weeks. It's just that we would have one more chance to talk about it before that happened.
Okay. If that passes, we can make that work. I think I understand what it, what it is. So at this point, Mr. Mayor, procedurally, there's been a motion to amend which has received a second. So now we would discuss the amendment and then vote on the amendment. If it passes, it would then take the, the original motion, and if it doesn't, we would return to discussion on the underlying motion.
Is there any discussion on this amendment? Deputy Mayor Zorn?
I want to make sure I understand this. So if we vote on this in two weeks and the parties involved haven't come up with a solution for how to pay for the space and work with and, and, and be thoughtful with each other, we would vote on it and it would just, the barricades could be picked up the next day in theory if, if they hadn't come to an agreement. Am I understanding that correctly?
The amendment only puts a conversation topic on the agenda in case we want to reverse the decision that this motion would make.
That, that is my understanding of the amendment as well. That the underlying motion to do two weeks and then stop would still go through, but the amending motion would then add a reconsideration in two weeks' time.
Oh, okay. All right, I think I understand.
Councilmember McNeil?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, well, I think the intent is good. I would agree with Councilmember Doer. I, I won't be supporting this motion. However, I believe that if there's further conversation to be had, correct me if I'm wrong, but we could bring back an item later on for consideration. Is, is that correct, Attorney?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no further discussion. City Clerk?
Please say yea or nay when I call your name to the, to vote on the amendment. Councilmember Zorn's?
No.
Councilmember, or sorry, Deputy Mayor Zorn's, no. Um, Councilmember Thompson?
Yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Nay.
Councilwoman McNeil?
Nay.
Nay.
Mayor Olson?
No.
Councilmember Doer?
Regretfully, nay.
And Councilmember Agnew?
No.
Uh, motion fails fixed one. So now we're back to the vote to the main motion.
Was there?
And the main motion is to extend the barriers to more weeks and then remove them.
Yeah, and I believe we're still in discussion. City Attorney or?
That's correct. Um, that, that item, the underlying motion now needs to be discussed before discussion is warranted before being voted on.
Councilmember McNeil?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted to clarify, the extension of two weeks would actually be, would not be two weeks from today, it would be two weeks from the original time that was set to be done. After Labor Day, I'm sorry.
We had planned after Labor Day, so it could be, it would be after a weekend, so whatever, that Monday, I don't have a calendar in front of me, so two weeks from Labor Day is seven, so we plan to remove them the week of the seventh, so they would be removed the week of the 21st.
Thank you, City Manager.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. City Clerk?
Please say yea or nay when I state your name. Deputy Mayor Zorn's?
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson?
Can I abstain?
Sure.
Cool, I'll do that.
Uh, Councilmember McAuliffe?
Nay.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yea.
Mayor Olson?
Yea.
Councilmember Doer?
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yea.
Motion carries six one, or six zero with Councilmember Thompson abstaining.
I believe actually my, I heard the vote as five in favor, one nay from Councilmember McAuliffe, and one abstention from, uh, Councilmember Thompson.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, Councilmember McAuliffe, you voted no on that? I'm sorry, yes, you're correct, five, five one zero.
Five one one.
Five one one, sorry.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for that challenging discussion. I think it's what needed to happen. I think, you know, doing it on the record in front of the cameras on record, so I think it was what needed to be done. Okay, on to our last A B here, A B twenty dash one zero nine, consideration of allocating the remaining four hundred two thousand five hundred of the state shares, State Shared Cares Act funding for COVID-19 related expenses and community assistance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kelly Mizoli here. I'll be doing the presentation this evening if you're ready for me to get started.
Please do.
Let me pull up the presentation. There goes. Is everybody saying that correctly? Yes, okay, great. Uh, thank you. This evening, I'll be talking to you about considering allocating the remaining four hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars of CARES Act funding that has been shared with us from the state. Um, Kelly Mizoli, I'm your Assistant City Manager, and also we have your Economic Development Manager, Jeannie Ash on the call. She'll be helping support me on this presentation. So we'll run just a little bit and remind everybody how we got here at this point. It kicked off. We entered into a state of emergency by declaration of the mayor in the city of Bothell early in March. The governor issued the official stay home, stay healthy order late March, there on March 24th. And the CARES Act came into law shortly thereafter. May 20th, we received our letter from the Department of Commerce, which allocated and awarded us 1.4 million dollars in pass-through funds from the CARES Act. And so in June 2nd, we came to council, and you'll recall that we discussed allocating a portion of that, and so you did so, and it was 1 million dollars. And then today, we'd like to talk to you about the remaining four hundred, four hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars. So that first allocation, I'll remind you, that you made, you agreed to allocate 500,000 dollars toward city-related expenses with our COVID-19 response. And then you also decided to allocate 500,000 dollars to community assistance. And community assistance was a broad category to encompass both our business as well as our resident assistance that we were planning to do. So staff has worked tirelessly on figuring out how to appropriately get this funding out to the community. I'll speak to the resident assistance dollars, which was 200,000. Those will go out in about 151,000 dollars in direct grants through the North Shore Senior Center. They're gonna be the administrator. It's not just specific to seniors, they're gonna do it for all Bothell residents. They're set up to be able to handle this sort of thing, and we're going to be able to use some of the funds to pay for the administrative costs that they're going to incur to do the administration. We just don't have the systems in place at the city to be able to, to screen residents and be able to appropriately decide who, who gets what funding. But the North Shore Senior Center actually does do that, and so we have that contract in place with them. Another portion of that contract was for the food pantry that's been serving our citizens here in Bothell. The senior center actually, prior to COVID, was serving about 30 people per week, and that number ballooned to 700 people per week. So they went from 30 to 700, very significant. And they did everything that they can, that they did a pop-up pantry in the parking lot, their entire lobby is taken over with the food pantry, and it, and it does serve families here in Bothell, not just the seniors. And so they requested some upgrades for them to be able to continue operating their COVID-19 response. And so you'll see that as part of the resident assistance to, to tackle food insecurities for our residents here. So that's 27,500 upgrades and an additional 5,000 dollars to help stock the food pantry. And so we have Jeannie Ash, your Economic Development Manager, here on the call with us, and she'll be able to talk more about the 300,000 dollars in business assistance, and she has been tackling this in-house herself. So I'll turn it over to, to Ms. Ash and let her tell you about the program.
Thank you. So, Council, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about the Bothell CARES Grant Program that we instituted and give you some background so that you can understand the additional requests that we're making this evening. So when you directed staff to allocate 300,000 dollars to support small businesses, we knew that our biggest challenge was that there was going to be more need than there was money. So we worked really hard to come up with a system that would, that we could distribute funds to as many businesses as possible. I talked to other communities, and a lot of them were using lottery systems to distribute grant funds. We decided here at the city of Bothell to institute a program where it was a first reviewed and first if you qualified and then first to receive a grant. So the program launched on August 3rd, and it was open to businesses with less than 25 employees in the restaurant, bar, retail, and personal services sector. By the end of the week, the program was open for one week. We received 72 grant applications, and with the allocated 300,000 dollars, we were able to award either a 10,000 dollar grant or a 5,000 dollar grant to 32 qualified businesses. So as I was going back through all of the grant applications and qualifying them, making sure that they met all of their, the criteria of the grant program, I realized that with making some adjustments to some of the grant allotments and with an additional 90,000 dollars, that we could award a grant to every business that applied, every qual, let me, every qualified business that applied. So hence my request for an additional 90,000 dollars for the, to the original 300,000 dollars that you allotted this program. I'll be available after the Assistant City Manager's presentation if you have any questions.
Thank you, Jeannie. So I just want to touch on the city expenses that City Manager Phillips alluded to in her presentation. This is some initial numbers that we have, and it's only for the first four months of our response efforts as a city. You can see right now we're estimating about 3,278,000 dollars in actual COVID-19 response among all of our departments. We'll continue, these numbers have, have taken a bit of, of time and effort to get from all the different departments. It's taken a lot of time and effort to figure out exactly what is eligible and what is not. We're getting updated FAQs from the Department of Treasury and the Department of Commerce, even, even just in August. We got two updates to that, which means they're answering more and more questions. And so we're finding out more and more things that qualify or don't qualify. So we're constantly looking at that information. We have a fabulous team of staff that is working to collect not just the numbers, but also to collect all the documentation that we have to have in order to be able to be reimbursed for all of these expenses. It is no small feat, and they've really worked tirelessly on it, and I'm, I'm very pleased with the team, so. But this is our first initial numbers that we were able to pull together for this evening, and as you can see, it, it, a COVID-19 response or pandemic response is, is quite high for us, and those expenses will continue as we continue to respond. And we just want to have you keep that in mind as we're moving into the second allocation of the remaining, it's 400 and 2,500 dollars. The recommendation this evening is for, as Economic Development Manager Ash said, 90,000 for the additional businesses to be granted assistance. We'd like to ask to keep it fairly similar to the resident assistant grants and the business grants, an additional 200,000 dollars to the residents, and then 112,000 for related city expenses. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Councilmember Doer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, so my understanding is that the governor is releasing more money to the cities. So can you talk about that at all, and if, if and how it, it might impact some of our expenses that currently aren't covered?
Yeah, so what we've received is a press release that Governor Inslee intends on sending out additional allocations to cities. And it sounds like it is the same type of funding that we have received, so similar eligibility. That's the extent of what we know. It said in the press release that in a few days, Department of Commerce will be reaching out and letting us know what the actual formula is. So at this time, we don't even know a, a dollar amount for our city. So we're just waiting and eager to, to see what it is, yeah.
Thanks. I just, I had heard the same press release, and I wasn't sure if you had any more information on that. So potentially, some of that uncovered cost may be recoverable in this next round. Okay, thank you so much.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to say, I think this is a very thoughtful approach to help our businesses and members of our community that are struggling, and I want to thank you, Kelly, and our City Manager, Jennifer, for your work on this. And I think the senior center will do an outstanding job. And I think the Senior Center will do outstanding job of actually distributing these dollars.
Yeah, I just, I just want to follow up with Councilmember McAuliffe. You know, this has been a troubling time for all of us in a number of different ways. I, I'm glad that the state has given us some funds that we could put back to the community. And two, like Councilmember McAuliffe said, the Senior Center has really stepped up big time. You know, 700 people a day, you know, I mean, that's pretty substantial and I, I'm real, or, a week? Is that a week? Okay, 700 people a week, but still, I mean, that's a lot of folks, folks. Thank you for all this.
Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Yeah, I don't know how we say thank you to all the staff, you know, Jeannie Ash and our City Manager, Assistant City Manager, that was a heavy lift and seeing that we could, we could meet the needs for all eligible applicants, just after our preceding conversation just was such a save for this heart. So, and I'm not even one of those businesses, but hurting for them. So hearing that they could all be recipients was wonderful. And I know you had to put a lot of sweat equity, sweat empathy equity, but I, I know that it took a lot of heart in figuring out how to, how to make all that happen. And 700 is a, is a phenomenal number. I was a little slack jaw about 2 million, a little over $2 million for fire for COVID. Could, not that, not that I'm questioning it, but I would, my curiosity is killing me. I mean, I know we were sending, we were sending EMTs in one at a time instead of both going in, but how did we get up to $2 million for fire on this?
Yeah, there is a reason for it. So the way that the CARES Act funding is actually written and what is eligible is if a, an employee is substantially dedicated and we had to determine that definition. So if they were substantially dedicated to the response, then we can claim their entire payroll and benefits. And so it was supposed to help ease some of the administrative burden of having to capture these costs. But at the time, whenever we started out, we had no way of knowing that it would be at that level. But yes, I mean, of course, fire EMS is, they're substantially dedicated to the, to the response for COVID. So I think that's how we got to that number.
Okay, that, that helps, that makes sense and it, and it's also quite sobering to realize the level of need that we had to dedicate to be available for COVID. So, so thank you for that explanation.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to echo the previous comments. Amazing work by the, the City Manager, Assistant City Manager, Jeannie, just amazing work. The Senior Center, 700 a week, I mean, that, just imagine 700 people coming to one location a week. The need, the help that they've provided within our community is just, it's just amazing and I'm so thankful that they're, they're here within our community. I too, when I see the, the fire, $2 million for fire, it makes me think about the conversation that we had before this meeting, which was with our legislators and how we really need to focus on working with them as much as we possibly can to see if we can get those dollars from the state back within our cities. I know all cities are going to be searching for dollars, but it's, it's so important that we, we keep those relationships with our, our state legislators to ensure that they can bring those dollars back to our community so that we can continue to do the work that we're doing within our community. But I thank you to everybody for all your hard work on this.
Yeah, I'm just gonna echo the same appreciation for staff. You know, it's, it's impossible to shout out for everyone that worked hard on this. You can tell by the, the detail in the, the numbers and the charts, you know, how much thought and effort was put into this. And yeah, our North Shore Senior Center is definitely, you know, a valuable asset that we have and I'm thankful that we've done what we have over the past couple of years to make sure that that's still in place and, and running strong and, and continuing our, our just cooperation and with them. So, so thank you.
Councilmember Doer?
Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna move the recommended action.
Councilmember Agnew?
I'd be happy to second that.
All right, that's what I was thinking. So we have Councilmember Doer with a motion to direct staff to proportionally $400,000 and $500,000, the state shared CARES Act funds, allocating an additional $90,000 for business assistance and additional $200,500 for residence assistance and the remaining $112,000 for city cost recovery or community response with a second by Councilmember Agnew.
Can I speak to my motion?
Please do.
Great, thank you so much. I didn't, I was so busy questioning about the second round of funding that I didn't have an opportunity to thank staff for all of their work. I mean, I think this has been really tough for everybody and I, I hope the community realizes how much effort we've put in to helping where we could and, and provide leadership where we could. And, and my biggest hope is that through the tough times like the pandemic, it brings us together and it makes us a stronger community for the future. And I, I think the work, you know, that Jeannie's done with the businesses and Kelly and all of staff has done to provide that support for our community, hopefully will go a long way towards, towards building a better community. And so I just want to thank everyone for their, their hard work and, and hopefully the community will know that we'll continue to do whatever we can to make our community stronger and to recover from this health and economic crisis. So, thank you.
Any further discussion?
All right, seeing none.
Please say yea or nay when I state your name. Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe? Council, Councilmember McAuliffe, is that a yea or nay? Thank you. Councilmember McNeil?
Yea.
Mayor Olson?
Yea.
Councilmember Doer?
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yea.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So that brings us to the end of our agenda bill items. Does anyone have any council conversation topics that they would like to cover this evening? Councilmember McAuliffe?
Leave it around, let me try again. All right, there I am, good?
Yep.
All right, so first of all, I want to welcome one of our new businesses on Main Street. It's called Piper and it's Chick Boutique and they have a collection of handmade jewelry made by their local owner and they welcome all of us to come and visit. It's a place for trendy and cute fashions. So please go and say hello to the owner of Piper. We're so happy to have them open on Main Street and they are so happy to be here. Second, I want to thank Erin Lenhart and the Safety Sidewalks Team for the work they've done from 88th Avenue Northeast, on 88th Avenue Northeast, from 180th all the way from Bothell High School to West Hill. They have repaired the sidewalk so that hundreds of people who love to walk along that sidewalk, they get to see the sunrise, the sunset, right where Magnolia Dairy is and it's now a beautiful sidewalk. All the repairs have been done and I really appreciate them and their work. So I just, I, I want to welcome all of you to come and watch the sunset and the sunrise at Magnolia Dairy on this beautiful sidewalk that they've repaired. Thank you, that's my report.
Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Well, the upside to shorter days is that coming and watching sunrises is later in the day, so I might take you up on that, but when the sun's coming up at five, I'm, I'm not doing that on purpose. Something that's really been on my heart is that a couple of years ago, we passed a tree ordinance, which has been very effective for large developments, but the, but the land that's available for large developments is, and available for that is becoming increasingly scarce. And something that I was noticing over our break was the number of trees that we have that are sitting not on large tracts of land, but on small tracts of land. And I don't, I don't want to become the tree police, but something that I'm going to just ask you guys to do is, is you're going about Bothell and you look at trees, I mean, we have trees on our property here that are over 100 years old and there's nothing in code right now that would stop me from bringing them all down and it, and it would be a loss. There are times I would be happy for them to come down, given all the, the pitch and the cones that come off of them, but they're, but they're, for the community, they're a wonderful asset. So, you know, if your mind's wandering and you're thinking about things, look at the trees and maybe think about, we have communities, Lake Forest Park and Woodinville that both have separate codes that are, that allow people to manage their trees, but also keeps, gives some measure of protection from the trees and at some point, maybe we'd want to talk about that. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, I think you guys all got the same email, is one of our board members is very concerned that city council become very proactive in promoting wearing masks. And I think we are all doing that and I don't want to be governed by terror with COVID. Don't want to give it more power than it's due, but I also want to be prudent with COVID. So this is a shout out to this board member that yes, we care about it and just to encourage us that when we can promote appropriate mask, mask use and model that, that's a good, that's a good thing. And that's all I wanted to chew up your evening with. And it's good to see your faces again, a little bit more sun kissed, so.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. You beat me to, to it on that punch. Yeah, I, I agree, you know, just making sure that we're consistent with our use of masks, you know, doing our, our social distancing, making sure we're, we're washing our hands. You know, I think, you know, especially the washing the hands was very front and center, you know, when this first hit in, in March, but it, it seems to, you know, be going back to where your typical day is, and it's not just front of mind anymore, but I think it's still, still important to do, you know, as, as, you know, our Snohomish County Health District person was saying, you know, we're, we're learning new things about COVID every day and, you know, just an ounce of prevention, you know, just reaps benefits down the line just, just in case. You know, we, we never know what, how the, the true mechanisms of spread is and everything, but you know, it's, it's easy enough to wear a mask, stay separated and wash your hands. Councilmember Doer?
Um, I wanted to add on to that conversation because I don't know how many people saw, but there was an article in the paper about different, the efficacy of certain masks and one thing that I learned is that those gator ones where they're kind of like, you know, neck scarves that people pull up actually do more harm than good because what they do is actually make the droplets and the vapors smaller so that they stay aloft in the air longer. So people may, that think they're actually doing something good by wearing those, those gator things are actually, it's actually worse. So I wanted to put that out there because I was kind of surprised. I thought anything was better than nothing, but in fact, that's not the case. And, and the other thing that we learn, I've learned through reading the paper is that people seem to be most contagious before they have symptoms. And so just because you feel great doesn't mean that you're not possibly spreading COVID. So I just, I thought I'd put that out there because I took the time to read the articles and so I feel like I know a little bit more.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to talk about how I feel in recent times and thank everyone for their support who's reached out to me within our, our community. We're all, all of our communities are going through a very rough time with this pandemic and a lot of the narrative that's going around nationally. And you, you hear and you sense a lot of anger in people, a lot of violent acts are taking place. But the one thing that I, every day, you guys hear me say this a lot, I'm just living my dream and it's having the opportunity to live in Bothell that allows me to raise my family here and feel welcome. And when I use the word, I feel welcome, it doesn't mean everyone feels welcome here, but there's hope. And what I mean by that is everybody's having a different conversation these days and I hope that all of us as council members can go out within our community and talk about all the good things that we're doing. There's always the negative narrative, but if we can go around and spread some form of positive and talk to people within our community about the wonderful things that we're doing, the successes and celebrate them successes, I think we, we can set the standard for how we can lead our community. I'm hearing from other leaders around the region how toxic their cities are and I'm thankful every day to live in the city of Bothell. While we may not agree on everything, we may sit up here, we make decisions, our votes may be slightly different, at least we can talk to them. And I think it starts with talking to each other and understanding each other and understanding that we all look at life through a different lens. And my lens is just giving people a voice, a chance to say what's on their mind and how they feel about that. And every time I'm on these council calls, these virtual calls, I feel I'm not sitting next to you and I don't get to feel the humanization of you guys sitting next to me. And sometimes things get lost in these virtual conversations. It don't get lost when we're sitting next to each other and we can communicate and we can feel the sense of how we're each feeling. So I just wanted to say for me personally, I'm going to do everything within my power to continue to get out within our community, talk to businesses, talk to our community members, I talk to youth in the, in the community. Right now, I'm part of a youth panel, 14 kids from the North Shore School District and we're talking about race and equity. And it's, it's not from my lens, it's from their lens and the things that they're talking about will amaze you, how they know what the difference between race, ethnicity, culture, how they know these things. And we as, sometimes as adults still need to learn those things. And so I just, I implore all of you to get out into the community, talk to the community, listen to the community, understand what they're looking for. I wholeheartedly support our police department. I want to go on record as saying that I've stood beside the men and women of the Bothell Police Department. A lot of you know the history of what's happened to me, but I can tell you that our chief, you know, standing there, talking to him, understanding where he's coming from, the lens is looking at his department through, I wholeheartedly support and respect him. Our fire chief, I unfortunately had a medical issue, that, that fire department, the service they provided me just as a community member was unimaginable that I had to go through that, but they were, they were here when I needed them. Our city staff, the things that they're doing, selling properties, public works, the response, you know, I had the, a few emails come into me this last week and You know, I had the a few emails come into me this last week, and the response back to the community members was swift, and they got their answers. They were able to go back to the people that they were trying to talk to. Public works, you know, and the city manager doing that. You don't get that in every city. And while it may seem that at times we're at odds, majority of the time, I feel in my heart, we're together. And together, we're gonna make a difference. Um, but we have to stand together, we have to spread the positivity and outweigh the negativity that's out there right now. So I'm looking around at each and every one of you, and let let's just, let's continue to do good work um throughout our region, continue to let people know in our region who we are, uh that we are the city of Bothell, and you can live here for a day or life. Thank you. Come on now.
Councilmember Thompson?
I just wanted to echo what Councilmember McNeil said. Um, I'm really looking forward to seeing all you guys in person again. Even when I'm on the wrong side of one sixth vote, I'm still looking forward to seeing the rest of you guys in person again. Um, and everybody wear a mask, um be responsible, so 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 we can do that and a lot of other things, too.
Can I make a motion that we end this torture? The silence is killing me.
Second.
Second. One's up for adjournment. All right, everybody. It's great to see you again. Thankful to be back and and uh talking and seeing all you guy- guys again, all all you people again.
Thank you, Mayor.
Everybody.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night.